Okay. Are you set captions, everything?
We're good to go.
We're good to go? Okay. Make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Langke? Trustee Lanfeer?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Is there any board member who has a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items before us this evening?
Yes. So regarding the second item on the agenda with the Ethics Board legal bill fee, I haven't been able to really ascertain what that item is about, but it seems like it might be related to an investigation in which I was named, so I'm going to recuse myself from the room during that discussion.
Okay. And I will recuse myself from item number two on the agenda. Okay. Anything else?
I have no other conflicts.
Okay. Nope, I do not as well. Okay. With that being said, we have the open meeting compliance certification guidelines.
Absolutely. I'm going to give the click notes. Okay. Speakers must give their name and address, organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by United States law. Speakers, you have any remaining time that you have to another speaker. Please provide an estate address, even if you're on Zoom, please do that. If an attendee is participating via web conference such as Zoom, the clerk will announce all initiatives single that they wish to comment. This is may differ by platform, but is typically endorsed through the raise the hand feature. That is what we're using tonight as Zoom, so if you wish to speak to the board, please raise your hand. If you wish for me to present a question to the board, put it in the Q and A. I do not respond to chat. Please don't put any questions in chat. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rule of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. And let's have a great meeting.
Okay. With that being said, would everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, speaking side of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united in our individual, with liberty and justice overall.
Okay. Is there any public comment before we begin? Anybody online?
Yep, we have a few people online.
Anybody commenting?
I'm not seeing anything at this point.
Okay. Department reports.
I think I'm the only department.
You're the department.
Yeah. I'm all by myself. So we'll start off with the bill pay. Any questions from the board on the bills as presented?
Just a question on the GPI. That's obviously in this year's budget, but did it fall into next year's budget when we were doing?
No, it didn't fall into next year's budget because it's actually going to end up being part of, I hate when the words just escape me, but we're going to be bonding that project. So it'll be part of that project. That project will be its own special budget, so that'll be the next step forward.
It'll be embedded in that bonding.
Right.
In a way, you're getting it back.
I'm getting it back, so it's going to refund to this year's budget for that line.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Okay. Is there a motion? Anything else? Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion of a bill pay as presented. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfeer?
Aye.
Trustee Lightke?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next, let me see what my agenda was. Oh, we have the March financial report. Is there any questions, concerns, or would the board just like need to go over some highlights?
Then, Eric. Highlights would be fine.
Highlights would be fine. Okay. As far as revenues, I'm really happy with the interest, and I keep saying that because it's just outstanding for us. We're looking at, we budgeted $2,100, which was difficult to obtain in past years. We're at $16,477, and we're not through the year, so I'm really happy with that.
Did I ask a question on that?
You can.
So our assets right now, we have the municipal choice of 1.1 million, and we have the repair RSC CD with 172. What's the yield that we're getting on that municipal choice?
The municipal choice, I've moved a portion of that, I've moved 1 million into a separate CD that currently is getting, I think last time was 5.4.
And that's embedded, so right now it lists it based on?
It's all in the one account.
It lists it all as municipal choice, 1.127, but what you just suggested is we're now getting 5% on a portion of that. What amount of that?
A million.
So a million of it, turning 5% for how, what term?
It's every two months I'm turning.
So you're turning, we're just keeping it on a two-month roll?
Mm-hmm.
So it's possible $50,000 of interest if we didn't spend any of it.
If things keep staying.
So you referenced the $16,000 of interest right now. Is that because we hadn't had some of it in a lower yielding account, or is that?
There is a portion that is in the general savings. I can't move all of it because it's the checking to pay the bills and everything, so I have to keep money free for payroll and other items.
So you're pushing as much as you can into the higher yields.
I am.
Short-term stuff.
Okay. I am.
Just double checking.
Okay. Any other questions on revenue? So, let's see. As we can see, there is a few negatives, but these are items that the board is well aware of. As we said, there's the consultant fees for 75, there's the village hall improvements are part of ARPA. We have, let's see here, as you talked about GPI, Southin Wood. At this point in March, it was 61,000, which would be reimbursable by the bond. And then we have some negatives which are part of the budget transfers I'm asking for, which result around the DPW working in different departments, and this is kind of continual. I try to anticipate, but sometimes I never know what's going to happen in any specific account, as well as there is an account, our unemployment line, as the board is aware, that right now isn't showing negative in March. It will show negative after this bill pay, so I put in a budget transfer to accommodate that.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the numbers? Everything's looking good. I'm hoping the next few weeks, I might be making some recommendations to the board. I think we'll be okay to fund the reserves that's anticipated if things stay constant. So I'm feeling rather good about the thing. I don't see anything major in there unless the board's seeing something I'm not seeing.
You know, thanks for staying so current. I mean, we're really very current with all of this. This is great.
So if I can just have authorization for the financials for water and sewer?
So moved for March 2024. Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lanfeer?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lightke?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
And if I can have authorization for the budget transfers as requested.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Okay. Trustee Lanfeer?
Aye.
Trustee Lightke?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. We knocked off two real quick on climate smart. We received, we're anticipating receiving in the $5,000 grant that the board was informed of, and we also applied for two more grants that we're anticipating, so those have been submitted, so as soon as we get the feedback from them, can I get them out from there? Do you remember?
Oh, boy. But not even in my head.
I know they're.
I think once $10,000.
Yeah. So as soon as we get back, we'll let the board know, but that's moving around swimming lane. The other thing is the website. We talked about this. Our contract is up at the end of the month. We reviewed other companies, went back and forth, and the pricing did turn out to stay with our current company. They will be doing some updates, some refreshing, will change some of the things that are a little annoying on the site as best we can, but we recommend continuing with them for another three years, and it does fall within the budget parameters that have been set by the board for the next four years.
Is that total, a three-year total or a one-year per year?
It's per year. We are not going with the mass notification. That's that 3,000 that keeps escalating there. It's the first part, it's the website management. We are not going with the mass notification program. We have the constant contact that seems to work very well. I don't see a point in adding it at this time, and it's kind of a costly thing. It's more than the management of the website. So if I can have authorization to sign that contract.
So moved. Second.
You guys are a little raw.
Keep waiting.
All right. Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lightke?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfeer?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Let's see here. I've had a request from, as they say, the town of Pittsburgh. They had an unfortunate incident. They paid their sewer bills late. They are requesting a courtesy of having those sewer bills waived.
Penalty.
Penalties paid.
Penalty.
The penalties paid. Let me get it off the right.
We're getting the payment, it's just the penalty for the.
It is the penalty.
Who's precedent?
What was it? It was 200 and something?
It's under 150. I have the numbers somewhere.
Oh, okay.
It's hiding on me at the moment. I carry way too many payments.
It's under $200.
It's under $200. I think it's to the benefit of the taxpayers that we don't issue penalties to another taxing authority, but that's my opinion, it's the board's decision.
Well, we also have, we have inter-municipal cooperation.
There you go.
They're our friends and neighbors.
Right. So, but I can't waive those arbitrarily, I do need a.
Yeah. We need a board motion.
Motion to waive the town of Pittsburgh's sewer bill late fee. I'll second.
Okay. Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfeer?
Aye.
Trustee Lightke?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. I did need an executive session on another matter. I don't know if the board wants to wait to the end or go now.
Towards the end.
Yeah, why don't we wait towards the end, I think?
Okay.
Yeah. We'll just make a note of it and remind us, please.
Now we're in trouble. We had the shot to remember that. All right. That's all I have for you this evening.
Okay. Well, thank you. So let's head on to the meeting items. The first. Oh, yes.
I had a question about, I think Dorothy mentioned some grants that may be coming in. What are those grants?
Can you say your name and address?
I'm sorry. Thank you for seeing anyone south of the industry.
The grants are part of the Climate Smart program, and we earn credits for doing.
Sustainability initiatives and projects that have been identified.
Okay.
So for example, the next one up, I think, is finishing the upgrades on like some of our streetlights to LEDs, so it's more energy efficient, you know, things like that that address infrastructure needs in a sustainable way.
Yeah. And those come in and they have to be used for sustainable projects, so we put them into.
Yeah. The money can be used for anything. It's specific to the Climate Smart program, and when we, now that we can upgrade our website, because we just passed that, we're going to have a whole Climate Smart and a sustainability page, so you all can go on and see what we're looking at and what grants we've been receiving and where the money's going.
Okay.
Okay. Next up, tree donation. Yes.
Yes. I believe you're aware, and I think Billy is aware as well. I'm with you two to the presentation and the sound.
Yep. You want to start in?
Sure. Village resident Maria Vanette has very generously offered the, it is a, I want to say the word correctly, it's a sapling or a small tree, which was taken from a cutting of the Copper Beach tree that had to come down in the towns over years ago. And so she's been nursing these two trees along, one is going on her property, and she's donating the other one to the village of Pittsburgh. So I think as a board, we wish to make a, I meant to make a motion that the board accept this generous donation of a tree to be planted in the Arboretum this next week.
Yep. Okay. I'm going to add on to that in a minute.
Absolutely.
I also just want, first of all, we want to thank Maria. That's such a nice thing. It's a wonderful thing to get such a beautiful tree, and it also, I think, really resonates with our community, because we all remember the beautiful Copper Beach that was there up until, what, five years ago now? Six, maybe? Maybe a little bit longer. And this tree is actually, Cornell cloned the cuttings from the tree, so there's a number of Copper Beaches that the town has received, so this is part of their program, and Maria's sharing her trees with us. So I would like, you know, you're making the motion to accept the tree. We also would like to add on that motion to direct our DPW to be able to plant the tree in an area to be specified, you know? And I think, I think she wanted to put it in the Arboretum.
Yes.
Yeah. So I think we should put that in the motion as well. Yeah.
Can we just ask our attorney if there's a secret designation before we accept this donation?
To plant a tree?
It's going to be a type two.
Okay. It's a type two?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So we've acknowledged it's a type two. Okay. And?
So we're making.
So do you want to continue with your motion?
And that it is a type two action under secret.
Okay.
I'll second.
They added the authorization of the DPW to plant.
And, yeah. The authorization of the DPW to plant the tree in a pre-approved location. I wonder if DPW is unsure going to pick up the location.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion?
You second it, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought I heard you say second. That should have been a previous motion.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Lanfeer?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lightke?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. And may I just add a little addendum, that I am hoping that this will be a kickoff to a future tree donation program in the village, that other villagers will also follow suit.
Yep, we love that. That's a great idea. Thank you. Okay. Yes?
Robert Corby, Southern Washington Avenue, Friends of the Arboretum. I just wanted to commend the mayor for his donation. We talked about the location, which would give it a special spot in the Arboretum at the junction of two of the major trails, in addition to what Mayor Plummer said about the Copper Beach. Copper Beach had a special role in this area, and because of the 19th century, nurseries like the Alabama Bear Nursery in Rochester and one of many nurseries made this at the cutting edge of the introduction of exotic species. And many of these species have become part of the vernacular landscape of western New York. Another example is the horse chestnuts, Norway spruce. So it's a great history for this tree, and one of the things that friends are researching is the possibility of plaques for trees like this, so we can not only acknowledge one as a generous donation, but also give them background behind the significance of the tree itself. So wonderful thing, and I also hope this becomes an opportunity for others to donate trees. I've talked to several people who are interested in doing just that.
Thank you. Great. Okay. Next up. Oh, any other?
Nope.
Okay. You were moving, I wasn't sure. Okay. Next up, the Ethics Board legal fee. Want to come up?
Up.
Yeah, sure. Or stand in the door, either way.
My name is Rich Forman. Forty-four, Brandon Place. I was a former member of the Ethics Committee Board, I'm not now. I suppose I need to start by asking a question, that is, I'm here to request that the board reconsider its decision to decline the full payment of the attorney's fees of Leo Fanuken, who was the counsel to the Ethics Board, and assisted us on the investigation. It's my understanding that the portion of this fee was declined because it was not included in his original budget. Is that correct?
That would be correct. Some of the board declined it. Some of the board members did not.
Okay. I think it's important that the board understand the circumstances that were at play here. Perhaps I'm the one who's at fault. If I am, I apologize.
Can I ask you to speak a little bit louder so the microphone can catch you? Thank you.
The board, the budget that Mr. Fanuken submitted did not anticipate that Trustee Lightke and Mr. Corby would fail to cooperate with the investigative procedures that it provided for in the village code. And let me be really clear about what I'm talking about.
If I may.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Could, I understand the difference in the fee?
Yes, the original retainer.
$1,400.
$1,400.
$1,479.17 that wasn't paid to the attorney.
Okay. And if I may just understand briefly, typically as services and requirements of legal consultants may increase, it would typically be appropriate for the boards to come back to the village board and request the ability to extend beyond.
Dave, I'm going to interrupt you for one second, because we have someone who has requested this to be on the agenda, and they're giving us a presentation.
I'm happy with it.
Okay. Okay. Because I didn't know if you just wanted to state what you wanted to.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think, so one of the concerns that I have, and I think it's my fault. No, it's okay. It's simply that the way things went out, you know, in past year, and the way things should generally be done as far as legal costs, there might have been a step in between that didn't work.
And I.
Right? There's two that have refused. Lisa can't vote on the matter tonight. It's $1,400, and I think in the interest broadly of the community, I'd rather just move this forward than have this be a dissertation on why the cost went up, and you didn't immediately say, oh, we're extending beyond the hours that were in the thing, maybe I should come back to the village board. Right? I don't even know the reasons why. I've read the report, it's public. So my thought would be is, there's a gap, it's a cost, I have to make a decision, should the residents pay for it or not?
Yes.
Right? In that you are acting on behalf of the village board?
Okay, no.
Well, not now, but then on behalf.
In your capacity and the.
Capacity at the time, as the Ethics Board. Whether or not you're, you know, right now you said it's my fault.
Okay, fine.
It's your fault, but you're still acting in the capacity of the village board or the village and residents, right, to move this forward.
Yeah.
We have somebody who's done the work for the village.
Yes.
As soon as you just pay it, then you have to go through the process of hearing the reasons why. And Lisa.
Why? Why aren't you interested in the reasons why?
Because I made the decision.
I spoke to Ms. Coe on the street, and we had an admittedly informed conversation, and it seemed to me, and I apologize again if I misapprehended her, but she utterly misunderstood the circumstances.
Right.
And had no appreciation for why the additional fees were incurred.
So my understanding, you want to.
Which I found incredibly troublesome.
So my understanding, you want to take this opportunity?
I'm here.
To correct the record in terms of what happened?
I understand that we don't have a forum sufficient to change the record.
Okay.
So you can't promise me that those fees are going to get paid anyway, can you?
No. So what I'm suggesting is, is on the agenda is the legal bill fee.
Yes.
And we can't do anything about it today. Somebody did work on behalf of the village, and whether or not, how somebody interpreted your work, right, and your response when you met with her on the street.
Yes.
I don't want to take a legal bill, whether or not we pay it or not. There's a reason why to have this all be a presentation issue to the law. I know you prepared comments tonight.
Yes.
But my thought would be to move this forward, pay the bill, and be done.
I'm here tonight. I'd like to finish.
You have every, every right to speak.
Why does that have a problem?
It's not necessarily a problem.
I mean, I assume you're going to share your views with Lisa?
No.
When you hear what I have to say, I assume someone for Lisa will read the transcript.
I would suggest that most all of us have, and hopefully the public, if they want to ask, but feel free. I like, I just want to pay a bill and move forward.
So do I.
Okay.
And I want to, I want to explain why I offered my apology for any failure to provide an updated budget from our attorney. It's because we never anticipated that Trustee Lightke and Robert Corby would utterly fail to cooperate with the investigation and with the procedures that are prescribed in the village code. We, now it's my turn. We asked.
Point of order. We have a resident who has served our community, who has asked to speak, and I think we should let our resident speak. He has requested to continue. We can follow up afterward, but I think we need to respect his request.
What part of this troubles you, Mr. Marshall?
What part of what?
What I'm saying.
You haven't said anything that troubles me yet.
Okay.
It's a matter of paying a bill, and when we talk about paying bills, we want to go through this. So I think what.
But you rejected, you rejected the bill the first time.
Again, I call a point of order. I call a point of order right now. We have a resident who has asked for this item to be on the agenda and has requested to speak, and I am saying, we need to honor this request as we would with any other resident wanting to have an item on the agenda and wishing to speak. That's how we conduct business in this village.
So for the record.
Please hold your questions to the end.
So for the record, the complaint alleged that there was a breach of confidentiality of an executive session in which a sensitive human resource matter was discussed. We were asked, we were given the complaint and asked to investigate it. We identified five witnesses who we thought had information that was relevant. It was the village clerk, it was the employee, it was Trustee Lightke, Trustee Lanfeer, and Mr. Corby.[1503.83] The village clerk cooperated. The employee cooperated. Trustee Lanfair cooperated. We requested an interview with trustee Lightke and he never responded. We sent him a letter and advised him, reminded him to board that our board had the power to interview him and requested that he cooperated. And he never responded or offered a reason why he wouldn't. In fairness to Mr. Corby, he did appear for the first interview we had with him. However, we later realized we needed to, when Mr. Lightke wouldn't cooperate, we realized we needed to get phone records. We asked him to provide us with his phone records, he wouldn't. So we retained counsel for the limited purposes of subpoenaing those records. We got the records and we realized we could follow up with a simple letter to Mr. Corby, asking him four yes or no questions, simply whether he could admit or deny that trustee Lanfair was a source of the bill. He didn't respond. We served him with, we sent a letter, we served him with a subpoena. Let me go back for a second. Goes to a point that you made, Mr. Marsh. When trustee Lightke didn't cooperate and simply didn't respond, he did act in one way. About two weeks after we asked for his cooperation, he put an item on the, your board's agenda in which he proposed that the investigative powers of the Ethics Board be either eliminated or substantially cut back. We heard that message loud and clear and realized we were on the clock. So we told our attorney to get a subpoena out promptly to Mr. Corby, he had his telephone records. He didn't respond. The probable and typical response to a failure. We then sent him a subpoena, asking him to appear before us. He didn't respond to that either. And as your attorney will tell you, the way you address that is typically to scold a person in contempt. At that point, we had had enough and decided that it was clear from the lack of cooperation what the evidence showed. So when I say that I apologize for not getting an updated budget to you from our attorney, it's because we couldn't anticipate the extraordinary lack of cooperation from one trustee and a former mayor of the village. And I'd say only this in conclusion, which is that if the village doesn't pay this forward, it sends the worst kind of message to people who live here that you condone this kind of unethical and improper and irresponsible behavior.
I would like to respond to that.
Excuse me one second, excuse me one second. You're not recognized at this point. Back to the board, Dave, did you want to ask any additional questions or have any other comments on this? The only question I have for you is, what was the timeframe for this? Because I know, I recall when you came to the board and we capped a fee. I mean, I know, I try not, just at least for the, for the public to understand what the timeframe was, leaving out of this information.
The village clerk made attempts, mostly in the month of February, to get this trustee Lightke to agree to sit for an interview. He either wasn't responding or certainly wasn't giving her an answer to her request. And she reported that. So on March 6th, we sent a letter to trustee Lightke, requesting him to appear for the interview. That letter is a part of the record. And he didn't even respond to that. Not only did he not respond, he certainly didn't even offer a reason why he wouldn't assist in the investigation.
So it's months out, you're trying to, I'm just trying to, just so the public can understand.
It was March 6th. By April 13th, he had an agenda item on this board's agenda to restrict or limit the investigative powers of the Ethics Board. She was a clear message to us, certainly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your service too. Yes.
Robert Corby, Southern Washington Avenue. First of all, no one on the village board ever told me anything about the investigation. And I said that when I was interviewing. In fact, I specifically said, if anyone had told me something from the investigation, I would have stopped them because I was mayor here for 20 years.
Okay, I'm going to let, excuse me, Bob, it's a point of order. The agenda item is about the legal bill fee.
Okay.
Okay?
But my name was compromised, okay. The reason.
We're not going to litigate anything here, Bob.
My actions were mischaracterized tonight. From the advice of my attorney, I did not engage in things that my attorney felt were above and beyond legal ability of this board.
Okay, thank you for your.
Including my phone records.
Thank you for your comment, Bob.
As a citizen, I am incensed that the village would go into my private phone records. It's an outrage.
Okay.
And I believe that the Ethics.
I'm calling again, a point of order. One more warning.
And that's why I did not cooperate.
First warning.
If I may.
Please, this is about just, you know.
It's disgusting.
This was, hang on, second warning. Hang on, I know there's, you know, there's, temperatures are raised here. This is about a legal bill. We do not even have the quorum tonight to be able to address this properly. And so I would like to move this forward, you know, obviously to our next meeting so we can address it with a quorum. Personally, I think we should pay our bills. That's what we do. And we've had, we always pay our bills for legal fees for other boards. You know, that's what we do. Every board has a right to seek legal counsel or any other resource that's required for them to perform on behalf of our village. And I thank both you and Mr. Hickey for your service on this matter and others that have come before you on the Ethics Board. So I think we just need to move this to another agenda because we can't, we can't vote because we don't have a quorum, Dave.
So if I may, you had asked Mr. Corby why I was not inclined to rehear the reasons why. And I think the understanding is now pretty much clear. There are perspectives and understandings that you've come forward. Not necessarily accusations as much as insinuations as to actions and behaviors that have led to the conclusions that you led to. Others may have seen it differently. I respect you needed to consult with an attorney. I respect why you consulted with an attorney. I respect the fact that in error or not, you didn't come to the board and ask for an extension of that legal cost. To the mayor's point, I understand why we should pay it. The reason not to have, to rehear, right? The whole thing in this setting. That's the challenge that I have, right? It's the understanding that there's differences of opinions with regards to your conclusions and with regards to others. And there's the respect that comes with that. The same respect is extended to the attorney who did the work, right? So we have your public document. There's folks who hear tonight, on the agenda is a legal fee, right? Your conversation with us wasn't just about a legal fee. It was all the reasons why, basically presenting the why, right? That was in the report. In the same vein that we gave you that time, the mayor who was accused in that report did not receive the same time in the same set with the same agenda. Meaning, I think we've extended beyond just the legal fee in this conversation in this room. And that's why I didn't want to go down that path and just pay our bill.
Okay, I see it a little bit differently. I think you were giving the explanation why it exceeded the cap that had been originally set by the board.
You needed to know.
That's all I, that's what I heard.
You needed to know why the original budget wasn't amended. That was the nature of the discussion. And I explained, because we couldn't anticipate that trustee Lightke and Mr. Corby would fail to cooperate in such an extraordinary way.
Let me say it slightly again.
And.
Sure.
What I said about Mr. Corby's lack of cooperation is not interpretation. We served a subpoena. If you have a problem with a subpoena, your counsel will tell you there are formal ways in which you address it. You don't just go silent, you don't just ignore it. Look, the procedures that we followed are in the village code. And if I'm mistaken, I'm sure you and Mr. Turner will tell me so.
No, again, I respect the efforts that you put forward. The challenges.
I think we had a discussion here.
In the moment that we could have requested an increase in the budget, we didn't. I understand there's reasons why you chose to do that, we have a bill.
I think we've circled around on this and I appreciate everybody's work. Thank you very much. And we will bring it to, let's put this on.
I'll put it on the next agenda.
On the next agenda, so we can.
I'm not sure I'm going to be here for the next agenda, but whatever.
Okay, but we'll let you know, you know, we'll close this out, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, okay. All right, moving on. Attorney update on amending.
Let me get to the other two trustees.
Oh, yep. Okay. So we're up to the next agenda item. And that's the attorney update on amending the short-term rental permit code and the Monroe County Water Authority contract. Just, you know, kind of where we are with some stuff.
I know everything about you. I said I opposed short-term retail co-remanded. It was plagiarized exactly from the Madeline Sings' report. Obviously, you haven't had enough time to comment.
Yeah, but thanks for putting it out, that's great.
We announced that. And Zach is contacting the guys from the Water Authority to look at. I meant there's a contract. So if there's a contract, we get a particular.
Yeah, so the, just so everybody's on board with this. The Monroe County Water Authority has a contract with all the municipalities for water. And our 40-year contract is coming up. So evidently, they have revised the contract after 40 years. So that's just really where we are. And it's just really more, every municipality kind of gets the same revisions and fees. So Zach's following up on that for us as well, so. And then it's the board, the board will, you know, we'll take a look at Jeff's work. There's no such thing as plagiarism in government, so.
There is a law.
Oh, then there you go, okay. So we'll take a look at that. But that's just to let everybody know kind of where we are on that. Any other questions for Jeff? Okay. Next up, discussion on the elimination of the R5 zone. Where do we begin?
I just really quick want to let the board know the law presented to you did not age enough time.
I'm going to say yes.
So you can't set up a public hearing of us tonight.
Yep, okay, thank you. Yep. Is there any discussion? Anybody want to kick anything off?
Yeah, just got it, they're done with their questions.
So it would have by the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to lead us off in the.
I guess I can start it, sure.
There you go, yeah. You started with the tone, didn't you?
So this goes back six, seven years ago when I moved here. At the time, we had a fairly old comprehensive plan. And we embarked on a new comprehensive plan. And in that comprehensive plan, there was a number of zones, that residential, mixed use, Erie Canal. And there was a major development on 75 Monroe, which had a code that was originally created specific to the acquisition of that land by, from the town, by the village. And as part of that, there was a cleanup of brownfields and an application before us that has gone through many years of litigation. We have a site plan approval for a project today that fits or befits the R5 zone. Should that project not proceed? Or should there be, just watching and listening to some of the committee comments about building it, whether or without public funding from the county? It asks the question to our board. Well, what if this doesn't move forward? Is there something different in the R5 that we may want on that track of land as well as perhaps others? So one of the challenges is understanding in our community, we have unique areas of use, whether or not it's the traditional downtown and mixed use Erie Canal and residential. Traditionally speaking, residential density starts from within and kind of builds out. But this is along the Erie Canal. And for me personally, I tend to think of that property as well as property across the street as residential properties that are an extension of the gateway in, from Monroe out, coming from Legman's into the village. And I think it would be reflective of our community to really capture the spirit of the historical preservation, the use and incorporation of the Erie Canal, maintaining public access and availability of space, but also create development opportunities for property owners, both across the street and or on that zone that are consistent with what we might like to see broadly, rather than just what came with the original discussion years ago, that being the R5 zone that didn't contain as much of the massive scale requirements that maybe would be more appropriate for a village of our size. So as I think about where we are today and the potential for new applications in future, should this particular project not proceed, I think it would be appropriate for us to identify, what does that look like? What is an optimal use of that land? But not just that land, right? We don't want a zone just to one property. I think it makes sense to have multiple properties. It could be included in that zone if there is redevelopment. And for me personally, I love the density of use and the mixed use that we see down on Shane Place today. I think there's opportunities in the barns for redevelopment to come before the village and think about where do we go with that broadly. I think it's good to try not to create some random pocket of new competitive mixed use that may or may not be most appropriate relative to traffic concerns or how we engage with the canal. It'd be nice to keep the density of use on Shane Place and the historical place where it is. You don't want to, in new construction, try to recreate something that already exists. You want to accentuate what's already here. And I think more residents in our community creates an atmosphere that would support more retail. And so a little bit higher density than just what our medium density currently permits might be appropriate. But it's having that conversation and starting it, recognizing that the R5 by itself is probably not optimal and moving something forward that is uniquely different, if in fact it's needed down the road.
Yeah, Lily.
So is, are you proposing that we choose from our existing zoning parcels that exist currently, choose, look at them and choose which one of those would have the best fit for there? Would you be willing to entertain leaving it at that 7.5 acres there and not include across the street? Whether, I'm thinking that this is going to be, whatever this is owned, the Talbets and the gas station would also.
Yeah, so right now, the gas station in Talbets are mixed use Erie Canal, right? So we could take the approach of simply saying, we're going to.
Extend it.
Extend it, right? I think there's a risk in that with regards to retail use and density specific, where you're not getting, you authorized by code something that you definitely don't want by code, right? And it's because there's nothing there now. Whereas on Shane Place, the buildings already exist now, right? So it's not as though you're tearing it down and building something radically different. But in that, there's no footprint currently. By allowing it to be mixed use, you run the risk that you get something you don't really want. And I personally think more residential opportunities in this community are a good thing, right? And if looking at the code, the highest density residential we have is medium density residential. And that's essentially single-family housing that's tight together. It's not multifamily. My understanding of how that land was cleaned up from the brownfield to where we are today, it requires a level of ventilation and density underneath. So you're building up with ventilation underneath. So you're essentially parking where you have airflow, right? And you're not going to be able to put single-family residences with traditional basements, right? Or multi, we mean like duplexes maybe. But the reality is for a property owner to move something forward that if this project should occur, right? Would probably require some amount of underground ventilation still to have enough density to make the project profitable. If in fact that's what we want. Like, we could go the route of saying, we only want medium density residential with residential access to the canal. And that would require further cleanup. And maybe we don't get there for some period of time. But that's a, that's a long path forward, right? So anyway, it's this question of creating a zone that's more optimal is what we want than the R5, particularly on mass and scale. So if something different were to move forward than what's currently being present, currently applied for and approved, right? That we have a different input on it. And I think if it's residential, it would probably have to be a modified version of medium density. And it could even be something like high density, right? Or medium density with conditions.
Define high density.
Don't know. Just something a little more dense than medium.
Yes, okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to enter something else. And I think that this is probably when it would be, which would eventually be brought to public hearing. I can see a lot of interest in public input being expressed because I don't know what, how to call the, the the appearance of not having R5 there might be misunderstood. That actually, it is R5 and will remain R5 and it can be built out as R5. So we don't want to create a misunderstanding that potentially something else could go there. The only scenario that would permit that is if 75 Monroe for some reason were not to be built. Then we would have the opportunity to change the zoning. Otherwise, the zoning stays in place. I think that needs to be sort of understood by the public that the zoning is not changing.
Yeah, I think you're echoing what you had just said.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're on the same.
We have a, we have a development that is.
We have an opportunity.
We have a development that has a site plan approval. We have a development that is in the permitting process. We have a developer that didn't receive committee funding and said that they weren't going to build if they didn't receive it. And I'm thinking as a municipality, we have to prepare for what's next based on those statements, whether or not they move forward separately or not, right? And so, hey, let's move it forward and develop what's been approved. But if we don't, we need to be prepared. And I think doing that sooner is better than later.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, your statements are anticipatory about any, another possible outcome that may or may not happen. But it's a more proactive way of looking, looking at the future and essentially protecting our village, yeah.
I don't think we have a code today, or a zone today that would fit what we would want along that gateway coming in, along the density that would be appropriate to consider, right? For how that land has currently been mediated, right? So I think you'd want to create a zone. And we could engage independently with our own thoughts and consultants independently and bring things forward that make sense. But I think it'd probably be somewhere pushing forward on medium density, but trying to have it continue to be an extension of the residential character. Maybe we leave, maybe we leave Talbets alone as mixed use because it's, that's how it is now. But if we do that, we're essentially rezoning a single property.
It could be a spot zone.
It could be a spot zoning challenge. And so you want to try to.
We'd have to really consider everything.
We'd have to figure out where else.
Because right now it's a spot zone.
Right.
It's what it is.
Right, so the question, and it made sense at the time because it was a new property acquired, right? And so you could potentially zone the office environment too, but that might be a little too much depending on what you move toward. But I think we should have the conversation. And I think we should move something forward because I don't think the R5 is the optimal zone. It's very much dissimilar, though stating very much what we might want, just not with the mass and scale requirements.
So you know, it's interesting you brought up the office park because I do think that there would be an opportunity to adaptively reuse those buildings, you know? And they could be townhomes or, you know, just, you know, because it's already laid out, it's there. And just as that more open space maybe into.
Yeah, you know.
So it has almost even like a little neighborhood feel in there, you know? Just the way it's all laid out, you know? It's not like grids, it's like little, you know? So that is an interesting thought to include that portion potentially, you know?
And along the canal, I mean, one of the other thoughts would be density. You could potentially include some sort of incentive zoning, right? Where you're simply saying the village board gets to make a decision which regards. Where you're simply saying, the village board gets to make a decision which regards to density relative to residential access and use in amenities, right? So if there are no amenities other than just a sidewalk, this is the density. If you want additional density, come talk to us, we'll see what we have and how we're incorporating public access and additional amenities.
Additional access and amenities. Interesting, interesting, yeah. Justin?
I don't have a whole lot to add. I've been on this board for a long time, and the, the R5 code hangs off of the current code in a strange, inconsistent way. And I think there's a lot of value.
That's an interesting description. Hangs off the code. It's an appendage, I think. Bestigial organ.
Yeah, yeah, bestigial from the previous version of the code, right? And so it doesn't follow the conventions, and I think that it's time to think about cleaning it up.
Okay, yes.
Robert Corby, 71th president. During the whole head of the issue of the R5 under the process, one of the many attempts that the HPV worked with in concert with me was to look at options, different options that would be smaller in scale while would still give a developer a reasonable return on that property. And, you know, throughout the process, including way at the beginning before, you know, it went anywhere, the original vision was to do something like townhouses that are in Geneva around Huggers Square and on South Main Street, because it recalls the tradition of this region and the canal itself. It's, it's a lower scale. It would be compatible visually when you come into the village, because it would look like something of a density appropriate to be on the edge of the village. And, and it could accommodate parking deck below the townhouses that would meet the soil requirements that are currently in place there. And we actually did several sketches, and I assume you probably have them in the archives somewhere, where we tried to lay out a walkable street that would have the streetscape of other village streets, and then put townhouses in a way that would take advantage of the canal side location, and also make sure units weren't 35 feet from the tracks they were, they are in the current design and speed proposed. So that, that, and I think with the, to do this successfully and guarantee that in the future, if you have this opportunity, you can work well. Consider the form they spoke, where the village lays out envelopes, and then the developer has to basically fill that in. Many municipalities that care about the form as much as we do in this historic village, that's the way they go.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you. So where do we go from here?
It's a great question. So this will be the first time that I ever entertain a zoning change.
Yeah, thank.
I was just going to say, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a resolution on the table right now to go to public hearing after it ripens. So that needs to be, in my mind, it's too premature to have that advanced at this point.
There isn't any resolution, it's listed as a discussion?
I know, but in the packet, there is a resolution, and I talked to Dorothea about that earlier.
It's not a resolution, what's in the packet is from, proposal, law from attorney as requested.
Right.
And it's.
It's writ for me.
Right, as I told the board in the beginning of the conversation, it wouldn't pass it to public hearing, because it hasn't met the aging requirement. So the board can.
Yeah, we could, we can take any action.
It's just giving the board the feedback.
We could take any action, there's no.
From the attorney involved.
I'm just saying, that's from the public's point of view, that is what is occurring at the moment.
That's what you understood. I understand. Okay, that's what you understood. Yep. So anyway, so now we've got a couple of different thoughts here. Jeff, any thought? Okay. Oh geez, I know.
Am I allowed to have a thought on this?
You always are.
Well, we're represented by other council.
I, well, I know that, but you're also our council.
MUOF is kind of an interesting combination of stuff. That's right next door.
So I think one of the ideas would be grab one of the other zones and expand it into this location.
I think so.
You could always do a moratorium in this section.
But you do have a lot of commercial value.
Hang on a second.
That's an interesting thought.
Can we?
Wow, that's a great thought. Wait a minute. That's on the record.
It's recorded.
That's a great thought. Just wants to hear that again.
Oh, you want to hear that again?
Oh, yeah.
Once a year. All right. Give it yourself, I'll record it. But that's a great thought. So let's, let's ponder this for a second, right? I think, does everybody here agree that we should change it and have it be something that makes more sense should this not proceed?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, we're there.
Okay.
We're there. I think, I think we're there as a board, which is why we ended up with this in front of us. So I think we've already, you know, as a board, have agreed that that's something that we, we definitely need to.
Conceptually.
Okay, so the idea then, as, as the great thinker.
Jeff, so then the next question is typically when doing a zoning update, is a moratorium often used?
Could it be a moratorium for?
We've done it before.
Something.
Okay.
For the zoning, for the zoning.
It was done at.
We have one now.
I, I like the idea of having time to think this through, and if we need to write a new zone that's a little bit more.
We do need a little bit of time.
Right?
Hang on one second, Jeff.
Whatever you do on this piece of property, you need to run it by your council.
Yes, yes, but again, this is now a thought before the board to do that, to bring it back to the council on this particular matter. Yes, Lily?
So we're not contemplating creating a new, we're thinking maybe we're going to change, make it, rather than pick one from existing, one from Calmay, we combine two others and create a new.
Well, we may, may want to talk with our other council who put forth this.
The MUEC.
Yes, about potentially just having a moratorium in some fashion. So we can take the time for deliberation and consideration about what things would look like.
Yep, and we could even look at the mixed-use office OF, where it does permit single and two-family dwellings, multi-family dwellings.
Where's your residential? Then you would just.
Proponent of residential.
It's in there. It's in there.
And there may be some, there may be some uses that we would not want, and you could potentially, again, this is what maybe the value of moratorium would be, to explore the idea of having mixed-use office Erie Canal.
Wow.
Right? So take an existing code and remove some of the things you don't want, but allow some of the things that might be flexible. Or create a new residential zone specific to the Erie Canal, right? So I, and go to ponder the idea of forum-based code.
Sure. Which I've worked with.
What I'd like to do is, if we could, instruct Jeff to write up a moratorium.
No, we're, we're actually going to speak with our other council.
I agree.
Who has initiated.
Yeah, you need, you need to abuse him, because whatever you do on this parcel.
Okay.
It's got to be consistent with the whole plan of the parcel.
Because of the other circumstances.
Makes sense. So let's tackle that path, right?
Okay, so we, we've come to that conclusion then as a board, that that, we will reach out then to our other council.
Yep.
To discuss that, that particular approach.
The idea of a moratorium to then ponder, rather than.
And we'll, we'll get with it. What I'll do is I'll, I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Using the board and maybe plan as our guide.
Use the top plan as our guide.
Yep.
And if, if our other council's comfortable, we can bring that up in the agenda for the next one.
Okay, that sounds like a plan.
Great.
Excellent, okay. Before we go to the next agenda item, I think we probably would want to have our executive session. Unless DPW, I mean, unless you think these are going to be quick? I mean, you know?
It should be, I mean, I don't know what.
I mean, I just didn't want to hang up, Jeff.
I think the hang up, there could be a delay as the member items, I don't know how many the board each had.
Well, okay, we're not doing them yet, though.
I'm just saying.
You're right, she's ready to pounce, I sense this.
We're looking to get Jeff out.
Okay.
We're trying to get Jeff out, maybe a quick five-minute.
Okay.
Because really what I have is going to be.
Did you leave Lily? Did you leave?
Before we move on topics, any other public comment related to the last topic?
There's nothing.
No, Lily was. Somebody stay for her memory.
That was why I, that's why I. That's why you don't. Okay, we're going to roll. Okay. DPW and office summer hours.
Is there any change to last year?
No, there's no change to last year, that's, it's exactly, the office would be the same as it's been the last two years, DPW's same as it's been, well.
Is everybody putting in the same amount of hours?
Yes, yeah. It's just different schedules, the, for the DPW, just get some in earlier, safer times. For the office, we're closing at 1:00, staff will make up the missing hours during the week.
Do we have any concerns from residents with regards to the hours of the DPW?
No, no, nobody has.
Are you going to approve the DPW and office summer hours as presented equal to last year's DPW summer hours?
One second. Okay, roll call please.
Real quick, that's starting May 3rd and going for the office through September 6th and the end of September.
As of last year.
For the season. Okay, I just want to make sure it's quick. Okay, trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lefier?
Aye.
Trustee Leike?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, the update on the DPW cabling, and the reason why I kept it on, thanks for going down to DPW, is just, what are the action items sort of coming out of that, so we kind of know where, what's, what we're anticipating?
Yeah, so the, the big thing, I asked Zach, and it's too bad he's not here, but he can weigh in later, I asked him, what's the immediate problem you're trying to solve? And I think the, the biggest problem was with the phone system and having cabling that supports a fixture in the phone system. My, I, I think the problem that the board is discussing in the last meeting was that we got a proposal for about $6,000 to update the wiring, and it wasn't really part of the capital planning. And so I think that given that situation, given that we're doing that planning, it might be a good idea to either include it as part of the plan or think of ways to do it more economically. So I offered to Zach, I, I told him what parts to buy, and I said I could more workshop on doing the wiring himself.
They're good with that?
Well, I, I think that's, that's what we need to, that was what I proposed.
Okay, that's a, I just, okay, so that's where it's at, and then we're waiting for feedback from him?
Yeah, I'm waiting for him to consider that, or, or say that, you know, there's another thing they need to consider.
Okay.
I, I think it's enough to get him unblocked with the phone system, and also to give them another skill to be able to reduce the cost of building out the office lofts and everything, if they do that themselves.
Just to comment, it was not, it, it, great work on that. I mean, it was a link to every single item that was needed to put into DPW in a total of 500 bucks, right? Compared to 65.
And then plus the DPW labor to do it, so. Now, Zach, Zach I know has been at an equipment show, you know, so he's been tied up, but, because I haven't gotten any feedback from him.
And the only other feedback, and, Justin, this is to your credit, there was a time where I needed to wire my house for new cat cable, and I think it was Cat 5. And it was when I had moved in or shortly thereafter, I'm wiring from the basin up, and I'm wiring the work remote with the, during COVID. And Justin's like, do this, do this, do this. I had never once made a cat cable myself or wired it, and I did it, and it's pretty easy to do, you just have to have the time to sit down and do it.
Oh, a sense of side hustle here, okay.
So I just wanted, I said, thanks, I did it, I think Zach, you can do it.
You know, one thing I forgot to mention, since we're on the cabling, which also led to here with the hall with the fiber, I just want to update, we did reach out to Greenlight. Greenlight can get to DPW, they doubt they can get to the village hall.
Really?
Yes. They're having their engineer take a look, but they did not sound positive at all. So I might be coming back again with spectrum. It seems to be a common problem, we're kind of, I don't want to say a dead zone, but we're in a.
Well, I think it's just locked, I think the stuff just locked down. That's what happened.
Yeah. So, yeah, initially they were like, oh yeah, and then they go, looked at our address and they go, oh.
Yeah.
So I haven't heard back, I keep talking to the engineer, but I anticipate by the next meeting, I'll be presenting a spectrum again.
They've been in our community for a long time, so.
I know, okay.
So we did try.
All right, so we'll wait to hear back from Zach, and we'll follow up then. Okay. Member items.
I sent to trustees that don't know, you've had a chance to look at it, and I think I copied Jeff in on the, on the last one. There have been questions from residents regarding some changes to the Northfield Common, 50 State Street parking lot. And according to a map that was provided to me, which I will send to the, oh, what is the name of, what's the name of that? When it's not GPS, it's, it's pick, pick something.
Pictometry.
Thank you. It was done on pictometry and sent to me, and I shared it with the rest of the board. This is a, a boundary or, I, I can think it's property dispute, but it's something that needs to be, I think, identified by the village as exactly where the boundary line is between Northfield Common and the RG&E right of way. I know this exists somewhere, the RG&E.
Scott's got a map of that.
What is it?
Scott has a map of it.
Scott has it? Yeah. I know that it was done during, you know, the Shane potential development.
I'm certain Scott has, has a map of it on that. We went, we went through it when we were contemplating making that village parking.
Right.
So.
I know it exists somewhere, because I know it was discussed.
Sure Scott has it.
Okay, so the action item then, what I'll do is I'll reach out to Scott and see what, I, I think you're right, I know he has a map of that.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
That'd be great, so we can put this to rest, so where that boundary is, whether or not the new asphalt that was placed is on the right of way.
How's that a village issue?
Well, I think it was, I think it was also an issue regarding the snowplows being stored on the property.
Yeah, I believe Steve.
That's actually come out, responded to that, and said the plow had been, it's stored on private property.
Neither one.
RG&E's private property is what.
It's neither, it's none of them are vill, sorry, neither of them are village property.
Okay, so that, thank you. That would be nanny. It's not a village response.
No, there's no.
Because if it's down there, it's either RG&E or.
Or, or.
Or 50, 50.
Yeah. And I believe that's what Steve responded with.
So it is a private matter.
Okay, so it might be a matter between Northfield Common and RG&E.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. We can still get the map from Scott, just so you're clear on boundaries.
Yeah, it is, it's kind of irrelevant during a conversation that's not weak, would could act on as a village, because it's between those two owners.
Okay, two different parties.
The only issue that we might have, might have addressed if it had been permanent is the amount of asphalt that was, that was put down, because I think we have a.
Yeah, well, I guess, I'm, I'm sort of wrong, so you're right, Lily, if, if they had exceeded their site, thereby covering someone else's property, does it need site plan, I mean, is that enough to do site plan?
That was my question, did it trigger site plan because it exceeded, what was the, approved by the planning and zoning board, what, seven years ago when they redid?
Right, but does it exceed the property that it was laid on?
It exceeds according to that pick?
No, 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 I'm saying, does it exceed lot coverage for the property on which that blacktop was put?
That's, that was my question to Steve earlier today.
Blacktop. It's on existing blacktop. I think they were patching.
It extended. It extended.
Yeah, I think, I still think that's, that's the property dispute.
Okay.
It's already an impervious surface back there.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll get the map, yeah, we'll get the map, there's potholes, and you know, I think that's why they were putting down asphalt.
That wouldn't have been.
I don't know. I'd have to go back there. I haven't, you know, I saw the picture.
It's quite an expansion.
Okay, okay, well, Steve's in tomorrow and we'll have.
Northfield Common's extended onto R G and E property?
Maybe, in my past, the previous, according to this Pictionary, I'm going to call Pictionary, yeah. It's on R G and E property. It looks like it's asphalt that goes from Northfield Common a little bit over into the R G and E right of way. That I think is where the concern is, but these are two separate property owners.
If it violates the pervious surface of R G and E, then I think there's a problem. If it's just on their property, then it's up to R G and E to take care of it.
Okay.
I'll get back to the results with that.
We'll get the map from Scott, we'll get the map, okay. Any other member items?
Just putting in Airbnb meeting down on the calendar would be good. Short-term rental, I'm sorry. Have a short-term rental, we already have one.
I'm sorry.
I think Alexandra reached out to the board and set a date for that.
Oh, good.
For that workshop.
Nobody ever reached out to me.
I'll talk to Alexandra.
Oh, I have to introduce you, yeah.
Because just so the board is aware, I'm having Alexandra, since she's at the short-term rental committee, I'm going to have her continue with you guys with that process.
Okay. I didn't see it on the calendar.
I won't reach out to her tomorrow morning.
I just, I've sent out twice now, I just resented because the timeframe for when you're going to do something with a moratorium depends, it is, it is fast approaching.
Yep, it'll be here. Okay?
It'll be really fast.
All right, why don't we, let's, we're on a roll, real quick, let's, let's do minutes. Let's just, let's power through. Okay, first up, the minutes of January thirtieth. Any questions?
I did not have any corrections to them, minutes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January thirtieth as presented.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lempere?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, February sixth. Any questions or comments on the minutes or amendments?
No, I think these were, these have been very good.
Yeah, Laura's on it, I know. Okay, is there a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February sixth, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Jeffin?
Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lempere?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We're going for a world record here, you realize that? Okay. Next up, March twentieth. Any amendments to these minutes?
February twentieth, no. Sorry to correct you.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, February twentieth.
Next is March twentieth.
I was totally on it.
Yeah.
Any amendments to February twentieth? Otherwise, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from March thirtieth, is that what we?
No, February twentieth. February twentieth. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Okay, trustee Lightkin?
I will abstain since I was absent.
Okay, trustee Lempere?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, March twentieth.
I only had one correction. Let's see, it was in the first motion, the law that I referenced was G M L ninety-nine G and it states G M U ninety-nine G. So maybe I misspoke, in which case the minutes are great, otherwise.
It could be missed.
If we could.
I think you spoke correctly.
It's sometimes the recording.
Okay, so, yeah.
Well, it's different.
Okay, any other amendments? Otherwise, a motion as amended?
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for March twentieth, twenty twenty-four with the stated correction.
Second.
Okay, trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lempere?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.